Cyrus, are you talking to us because we can't hear you?
Oh, I don't hear anybody talking yet.
I see his lips.
Okay.
There you go.
Am I on?
Yep.
Yep.
Alrighty. That was pretty easy.
Okay. Um, all right, I don't know how to see everybody at the same time, so.
You should have a little, three dots on your screen someplace up in the corner.
Okay.
We'll have screen view. You should be able to see everybody at the same time.
Raise hand, webinar settings, minimize whatever now. Oh, share screen?
Share screen?
No, you're not going to share your screen.
Ah, crap.
If you go to participants, now we've got 10 participants.
Okay.
I see everybody. I'll go to view options. It's on the top next to the green bar.
Top next to the green bar.
Fit to screen, 50%. It says you are viewing town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island screen. It's a Kelly Green bar on the top of the screen. Do you see that?
Hold on a second. Hey Russ, how do I see everybody?
You're worse than me. You're worse than me.
He does this every day, so.
If you're on an iPhone or an iPad, you probably can't see everybody.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just a PC.
When the screen's not being shared, there's a, when you hit this, there'll be a thing that shows up there.
All right, so I'll just see whoever talks, I guess, right?
You'll see what we talk.
All right, I think that's good enough.
The green bar, I see zoom ratio, hide video, request for remote control, enter T, exit full screen. I want to see what Cynthia's saying, so.
Yeah.
I'm on an iPad.
I'm on a PC.
Yeah.
I see a green bar at the top of the screen, like right there.
Yeah.
And it says view options next to the little carrot going down and you click the carrot. And it says your ratio, fit to screen, fit to window.
Zoom ratio, yeah, fit to window, hide video panel, oh, fit to window is the one?
You can go fit to window or side by side.
Oh. I learned something.
Well.
Are we ready to begin, you guys, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So it's 7:04 and the designer review report, board of Portsmouth is convened. All members are present. Um, our first, our board members, Brendan is a naval architect. Leslie is a landscape architect. Cindy is an interested party and concerned citizen. Nick is a historical architect. Cyrus is a general contractor. And I'm a general contractor. So we're pretty well covered. We, our role of our board is to review all applications before they go to planning and zoning. In the town of Portsmouth, this falls under the commercial guidelines. We look at landscaping, signage, site, the design of the building, lighting are kind of prerequisites. And I know the petitioner has submitted all the drawings, the site drawings from Prince, Princeby Engineering and the shed manufacturer, let's see, Sheds Unlimited. So is there anyone to speak from the petitioner's side at this point? Explain what they're doing?
Hi, good evening, I guess I'll jump in, I think the applicant might be on as well. My name's Josh Rosen, Rhode Island Registered Professional Engineer with Princeby Engineering, Inc. Office at 27 Sakon at Ridge Drive in Tredon. How are you folks doing tonight, everybody safe?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thanks. So my partner, Tom, is kind of lead on this. He's dealing with some COVID things at home, so I'm kind of jumping in. I just, I'm here to give a cursory view of the project, answer any questions that you may have. I can do a quick walkthrough if you like on the site plan end of things. Then like I said, I think the applicant's on as well, maybe to answer some more specific questions. But just so, in the way of a summary, if that's all right, if you want me to keep going, does that sound good?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, so obviously this particular property in question is on East Main Road and Hillside Road. Frontage on both, it's assessors, lot 29, lot 113-B. And there's approximately 7,500 square feet of area that we're dealing with. The property's zoned, commercial one. And the proposal in front of you is to build a 24 by 24 utility building for a particular fiber optics company. And with this particular building, the proposal includes some infrastructure, such as a public water service from Hillside Road, a private onsite wastewater treatment system, a generator and transformer, and two onsite parking spaces to service the employees. This building's not a retail building. It's only for use for employees of the company. I'll let the applicant maybe explain a little bit more about what they would do from this particular hub. But there is an area of signage that we are proposing. It's a 16 square foot sign, it's located on East Main Road, on the, along the East Main Road and frontage. For the new building, we've decided to utilize a rain garden system, two different rain gardens to mitigate the water runoff from the roof, the new roof. And there's also a proposal to provide an arborvitae planting row along the eastern property limits, the boundary between lot 113 and lot 113B here.
Uh-oh. What was that?
Hello?
Hmm. I don't know what happened.
Froze.
And froze. I can see House of.
How do you say your last name, Yates or Pete's?
Yeah, my last name is Peace, just like love and peace is pretty easy to pronounce. A lot of people say pieced up, I'm not offended by that.
Um, what, how tall is the sign? I'm just curious because for planting purposes, to screen the transformer and the generator, I was just wondering how tall the sign is.
Yeah, so this sign, we are working with Lip Tech signs off of East Main Road. He came down with a smaller sign design, but he hasn't given me a total height. I don't think it would be any higher than any other sign that's typically found on East Main Road, like the Lip Tech signs, but not looking to be unduly high, but I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay, but it's like a shorter sign versus like a tall sign, right?
That's correct, and it would be one of the smallest scale down signs, just because our frontage is a little bit less.
Okay.
Is it going to be lit, externally lit?
Say that one more time?
Is it going to be externally lit?
It will be externally lit. The idea is to have ground based lighting. We're not sure if they're going to wire or use solar lights just to illuminate the sign.
Okay. Possibly solar. All right. Um, I guess since we're on the lighting, should we talk about lighting or?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Um, what's the, what's the other lighting that's on the building or on the property?
Two proposed downlights, I believe.
And it's on the building? Okay.
Yeah, so the lighting would be for the building for security purposes. It would be motion activated lighting. What we're proposing is defiant lighting. We can adjust the angle of the lighting so it would not extend across the street or disturb any of the neighbors. It's more just so that the security footage would be able to pick up valid footage. We're just, as an internet service provider, we just want to make sure that we have a reliable service and that there's nobody around the building that shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Could you give us a little background about what this building is going to be used for?
Correct, so the building will be used to build the last mile of internet service here on Atlantic Island. So what will happen is that we'll have telecom equipment inside the building. It will be considered a storage building by the fire marshal because it's not going to be an active office building. It's more just to host computer switches that will power internet service equipment. And then the building is still for just the monitor for environmental. We just can't let it get too hot or too cold. And again, a lot of the work will be done remotely. We're just going to remote into the building, so I don't expect a lot of foot traffic or vehicle or traffic to the building.
Hmm.
Okay.
Um, one other thing about the landscaping before, I'm sure you want to get into the building, but what I noticed is a list, I don't know if anyone from Princeby's on here right now, but I noticed there's a list of plants, but is that like just besides the arborvitae's on the side, is that just possible plants that they might use or something?
Yeah, that was the proposed, that was the proposed listed plant. We're not dedicated, we're open to any suggestions. I don't think we would want to go outside the boundaries of what the native plants are or do anything too unusual, but it's more for above and bottom mitigation or just to be aesthetically pleasing. Some of the neighbors have commented, they would like the building to have the nice landscaping. I don't think we need to go above and beyond, but we want to be a good neighbor.
I mean, honestly, I think the only thing I'd be concerned about is where the generator and the transformer are, to just make sure that you block those. And I know the generator, you have to be like three feet off of it. So, I mean, the inkberry, you know, whether it's like, I'd say use the evergreens on your list.
Yeah, that's the only thing that's made too. The two pads up there, yeah, some inkberries, some.
Arborvitae, maybe?
Arborvitae, auto lucans, some of.
I think the roadies are on there.
And maybe some, I don't know, hydrangeas to look pretty in the summer, but.
Yeah.
Some screening around those, but other than that, it's like, it's not an enormous building on the property. So just, just screen this, just screen the stuff on the East Main roadside and seems like probably pretty good.
Yeah.
I just, I have a question, why was the, all that equipment put on the East Main roadside? Why, why isn't, it looked like I'm looking at this and I would think the entire property would be flipped? Building on the East Main roadside, all the other stuff hidden behind the building.
You have septic field there, you know, and then you've got boundaries where you have to put the septic field. So they're at their, looks like they're at their 20 foot setback, so that's why it's so tight to the building. And I don't know how you flip it, to be honest.
A quick question, if this going, if this is not going to be a building that's going to be used, you're having plumbing, you're having the bathroom there?
State of question one more time, sorry.
You're having, there'll be, you need, you need water service or a plumbing system in, for this building, but you said nobody's going to be working there?
Yeah, so what will happen is that we are proposing a half a bathroom, just in case that someone does need to use the bathroom. We just thought that'd be the nice thing to do.
So you're putting in a leaching field just in case somebody has to go to the bathroom?
But well, I think it's more just, I don't know if we're putting in some day ones, but it's putting it in this time today, just, it would just be easier to do that. But yes, in case someone has to use the bathroom and it's 2:00 in the morning, I would like them to feel like they can use the bathroom instead of going to Cumberland Farm to do it.
And that leaching field could not go be pushed towards East Main? That was the question before? It couldn't be flipped?
I was actually talking about the leaching field. I was talking about all the concrete pads and the equipment, right? How high will this equipment be?
Yeah, because that property slopes down a little bit.
Yeah, pretty flat.
Is it? No. I was going from memory, I thought it sloped a little bit, but yeah.
101. Yeah, it looks like it's like 103 at the street and 102.
102. Pads.
It is flat, all right.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing too is they still got to deal with, they're a gas and electric and whatever they're called this week, and the national grid, and they sort of, I know they, the way they are, they dictate where they want it. So that's kind of the benchmark you got to work against, unfortunately. I mean, I don't have any problem with it, and I think if they screen it, it'll be fine. You know, we caught some, I caught flag, Mike caught flag from Gary Travers' building went through without us reviewing it. And you drive up the road from Beatty's and there's his electrical panels over here. There was a few phone calls and emails on that, so. Let's be proactive on this and just say, okay, we want screening of some sort, whatever our landscape people think is the best. I see Nick, you guys, that's your port today. So just call out what you think or they need.
Yeah, we already basically did that, so with the roadies and I can write it in the, you know, roadies, cherry laurel, the inkberry.
Well, again, I drove down East Main a week ago and looked at this and I drove by the site and I missed it when I drove by it, I said, oh, that's where, it's a very small site and it's tucked in amongst, you know, buildings that are, I would say, convert, converted to small businesses or still residential, I don't know what else you'd call it, country homes. I would think that, and I'm not jumping tracks to the aesthetics of the building that's going in, but the, the, I would try to make that building as bland as it is, be screened a little bit more from the street. Maybe if there was some taller growth towards the street as well, so that you're not looking right across sort of this flat yard with a little bit of screening and then what would, could appear to be the side of a garage. It's just sort of an aesthetic thing that jumped out at me that there's sort of a mishmash of newer and older buildings there, and it'd be kind of nice to try to make this thing, it could be accomplished by plantings on the roadside, I would think, that would help to screen sort of the building back too, so.
I think, I know what you're saying Cyrus, in between the sign and the transformer pad and so forth, make it easier, just mimic a whole row of arborvitae.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it has to be a complete screening arborvitae, but a, maybe some plantings on the roadside of it that would help to minimize the impact of just that very sort of, as I said, square, I won't say industrial, but very plain building, to make it blend a little bit more with the area, not necessarily the budding houses, but just the area around, try to make it less as a pop-up little building, just sort of sitting there in the middle of the yard.
And as Leslie and I said earlier, not just, you know, not just, again, you know, you have on the right side this row of arborvitae, don't just imitate that on the right side because that's dull and boring, although it's, I guess it falls within the parameters. But what we're trying to do here, the point of this whole, of this, of our group is that if new construction is being built in town, make it look nice physically, the building, but then also the surrounding. So yes, you could put a straight row of arborvitae again, but you can also make it look nicer. And as we said, a mix of some evergreens and flowering shrubs, some poller shrubs, small trees, whatever. I mean, we're not asking you to go out and put in, you know, an arboretum, but it just, it can look nice without you going out of your way. And then everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, around the sign, you're going to probably want to have like the grasses and the hydrangea, you know, you're not going to want anything big anyway.
Right.
Um, but I would also be careful on that corner. You don't want to put anything too tall because you're going to block the view when people are trying to get out of the street.
Right. Well, again, we've had applications for buildings where they wanted to have the building and the signage and the driving in and driving out be very clear and open, but because the nature of this structure is essentially a, just as, I'm going to call it a storage facility for lack of more clarity. There's no, there's no reason you need to have, draw attention to the building itself, access to the building. So why not then try to sort of, I won't say camouflage it, but minimize, minimize the building's impact by the plantings that you could do between the building and East Main Road and Park.
So to avoid having them to hire a landscape architect, and you know, we worked with Princeby a number of times, I think that if you could provide a list of what you would want and mark up this plan that we're working off of right now, where they need to be placed, how many gallon sized plantings there are, we put that in our opinion and go forward with that. How does that sound to everybody? I mean, you guys are the experts in plantings and, you know, you've been at it for a while on our board, so I think you know what we look for, so.
That was my opinion, I would defer to Nick and Leslie and anybody else that would have an opinion about the specific types of plants.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide a laundry list and then you pick and choose from that.
Yeah.
All right, so that covers landscaping, we've talked about signage. Let's move to the design of the building, if we could. Um, so one of the criteria's that we look at is the building materials. And, you know, we allow vinyl siding or parts of it for different projects over the years. We prefer more of a, maybe a hardy board or something like that. If, you know, it's from an interest standpoint, it's easier to keep clean than vinyl. The hardy board lasts forever and now they make it that the color goes all the way through. In the old, the first generation just had the baked on color and if you scratch it, you can see the white. Now it's all the way through, so it's a better product. I think we would look for architectural shingles on the roof to kind of dress it up a little bit. I know it looks like it's three tab, but that's, you know, just kind of an opinion. The windows do have mulleons in them, which is not what we look for. The door doesn't look too bad. The garage doors could be better. There's more of a colonial style out there with this fake strap hinges and handles. And I don't know if they're playing on lights because you might not want people looking in it, but those are, those are my suggestions. I defer to, you know, how does the board feel about this overall design?
I mean, it's a little, a little vague, so.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing, I mean, it's a basic box. And the, I think the overhead doors are the largest design element that I personally would like to see us, you know, some modification to. I know you have limits as to what you want to be spending for, and I'm not saying you need to get custom doors, but they do have something other than 16 panel doors that could be a little bit more like a barn door or something like that. Because essentially it could be a shed building, which would sort of pick up the, you know, the Portsmouth, the country feel rather than, this is the, the overhead doors particularly to me seem very commercial.
That's my first impression too Cyrus. So if we stipulate, um, you know, the mold windows, the architectural shingles, clapboard, I mean, we've allowed vinyl in and clapboard, we've allowed vinyl shakes in in the past. We're not going to make hardy boards more expensive, we don't want to push that one, but just clapboard looking vinyl. And then the doors, there's so many better types of doors out there than a 16 panel, it just, it's dated, nobody, nobody uses those anymore. So that would be our recommendation, to come up with a more of a colonial look. And any door company has doors that are going to cost the same as these anyway. So, you know, the hinges and the handles that look like it's a barn door. That's what I'm going to, I think we should add to our opinion, more of a barn door type.
So who is the company that's making the shed you mentioned before?
It is Sheds Unlimited from Morgantown, Pennsylvania.
So they're pre-made, am I correct?
Well, they have some on site, they can't, a building 24 feet, I don't know if it's a two-piece modular, but you know, it might be, but they wouldn't have the doors in. You really can't, you can't ship this as a modular, it's impossible.
Yeah, they're prefab, so they could be also panelized where they just ship them that way too. But I'm on their site right now and they do have great barn doors with the, with the black latches and I'm sure they can accommodate the concept that we're thinking about.
Can, can you send that, is it the EP or something, can you send that along? And we can attach it to our opinion, Cindy?
It's just, it's just their.
Okay, so I think, I think the petitioner gets the idea. Um, so gutters and downspouts, I mean, you're not shown, but I'm assuming you're planning on that because you're going to try to feed the water to the gardens up front, the rain gardens. I guess gutters, downspouts, everything would feed towards the driveway side where the two. Is that how it goes, Josh?
I don't think Josh is here.
Is Princeby still on?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay, sorry.
He got bumped and then I.
He didn't come back, yeah.
Another invite, but.
Okay.
Maybe he lost power.
All right, so obviously there's going to be gutters, downspouts leaders to that. So, I mean, you guys have any other questions on the design? If we put those in, those sort of suggestions in our opinion? It's a trust, they're going to assemble it on site.
It's obviously, it's small enough, they're not going to have dumpsters or anything like that, it needs to be screened, right?
I can't imagine.
All right, all right. Just their own trash cans. We got lighting, we got landscape, we got signage, we got materials.
And so the lighting is two proposed downlights that are motion activated, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is that all the lighting that's going to be there?
Is it what?
Is that all the lighting, that's it?
Yeah, except for maybe a downlight on the sign. So it's pretty low.
Low in fact, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so as far as the advisory opinion, it's the clapboard looking vinyl, architectural shingles on the roof preferred, mold, molded windows with mulleons. And then the garage doors prefer a colonial type or a barn type door with hinges and handles that are more barn-like.
Yes.
Okay, and then the landscaping advisory. And otherwise, I think that was it, right?
I think that's it, Mike, when does, when does the petitioner go to planning board next Wednesday? I think that's it. Mike, when does, when does the petitioner go to planning board? Next Wednesday? Next Wednesday, which is the 10th of June? It is. Yeah. Okay. So if you, Leslie and Nick, if you don't mind getting together, we've got a little bit of time here to come up with a plantings list. Do that. And I, I think that, you know, I think that's all we need in our opinion.
Yeah.
Does the petitioner have any questions?
Yes.
Can, can you, can you hear me?
There is.
I don't know. I don't know if you can.
I don't, he's, he's got his U button. I can see it on the screen. And I have to ask too, if there's any butters or interested parties that would like to speak at this point. I don't see anybody that's called in. Mike's double checking real quick. Hope they notified. Okay, no one. So that's it, I think. That's our opinion. And as soon as you guys can get together to the planning list and generate the report. Leslie, I know you're probably busy. If you need some help, let me know. Whatever. So if there's not anything else, then I thank everybody for joining tonight to have full participation for service to our Portsmouth. And I think we're good, Mike. Wrap it up.
Very good.
Don't drive tonight. I just, when I drove here was awful and it's going to be worse when we leave, so.
No, I'm not leaving the house.
Be careful driving.
I'm just walking upstairs to go to bed later.
Probably has his pajamas on, on the bottom, right?
Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Leslie, I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Bye.